Presentation, you have to hold the whole time?
No.
Okay.
Because I have to do something for my.
Welcome to the wow, regular, regular meeting, January twenty eighth, city council meeting. Uh, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Costa Junior is absent. Councilmember Bernaz here. Councilmember Villegas here. Councilmember Hernandez here. Mayor Julian.
Here, we have a quorum, will you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance? We have a quorum, will you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Next item is a moment of thanks, appreciation or condolences. And I'll start with Amelia, anything? Okay. Anything? Have a couple, uh, one is, uh, condolences to the other fire victim there at the Los Angeles County fires. Uh, now there's twenty nine members that have perished and condolences to those family members and the whole, everyone that suffered a loss there. Also, there's, uh, Freddie Mambaglisa, who was longtime resident here in Guadalupe passed. And again, Aaron Sapeda, uh, who's a nephew of our councilperson, uh, Jean Costa, uh, passed. Uh, Cipriano Batista was noted before last meeting that he, he actually passed in that car accident. And his father goes way back, uh, and grandfather go way back here in Guadalupe. And then there's a lady named Alyssa Vista and her family. Uh, her son lived here in Guadalupe for a while, so she also passed, so condolences to them. Uh, the next item is agenda review. Is there a councilperson or staff that wishes to change the order of businesses noted? You're good, good, good. Uh, next item is item five is community participation. Anybody that wants to speak on an item that is not on agenda, uh, they can either fill out an application, uh, to speak or, uh, come before us. And that's one person Beverly Taylor.
It, it's yes. Good evening, mayor and, uh, city council members. My name is Beverly Taylor and tonight I'm here representing the National Day of Prayer as Guadalupe's coordinator for the National Day of Prayer. And prayer is a foundation and was critical to the birth of our nation. And in history, we see that, um, in seventeen seventy five, the first continental congress called for a national day of prayer. President Abraham Lincoln in eighteen sixty three called for such a day. In nineteen fifty two, Congress established the National Day of Prayer as an annual event by a joint resolution signed into law by President Truman. And then in nineteen eighty eight, the law was amended and signed by President Reagan, designating National Day of Prayer as the first Thursday in May. And prayer continues to be vital today. The National Day of Prayer organization celebrated seventy three years as an organization in twenty twenty four. They have seven targeted areas where they, um, pray for our nation and, and, and America. They pray for the family, education, government, military, businesses, media and entertainment, and the church. So in twenty twenty four, it was exciting that Guadalupe had its first organized National Day of Prayer here in front of the Veterans Memorial Hall in the, in the parking lot. And we had about forty to fifty people in attendance, and I'm happy to say that, uh, Public Safety Director Michael Cash was, was in attendance too. And in this year, uh, National Day of Prayer will be May the first, that's the first Thursday of May. And we plan to have it, um, around the similar time, the noon hour, and again, uh, in front of the Veterans Memorial Hall. But today, I'm here today just kind of to invite you, uh, ask you to save the date for that particular day, just because it's, uh, we believe it's important and, um, and I'm just excited to be a part of the National Day of Prayer here in Guadalupe. Um, as a organization, um, it's, um, the mission of the National Day of Prayer is centered around, uh, the Lord Jesus Christ. And it exists to mobilize unified public and personal prayer for, for America. We have about ten to twelve people that currently meet on the, um, third Friday in the evening to pray for Guadalupe and to pray for yourselves as well. Tonight I have Donna Guerra is here and she, uh, is one of our, um, team members, I guess we can say, and, uh, we're just, we're honored, um, to be praying for Guadalupe and to be a part of an organization that, um, recognizes the, the, the importance of prayer and praying for not only our cities across the nation. Um, but the, the, the world is, you know, the nations around the world as, as well. Um, this year's, uh, theme is hope and it comes out of Romans fifteen thirteen. And it's now, may the God of hope fill you with all joy and peace in believing, so that you will abound in hope by the power of the Holy Spirit. So thank you for your time and as we get closer to May first, I will do a personal invitation to all of you. Thank you.
Uh, last meeting, I asked that an agenda item be added regarding the inserting, uh, flyer in the water bill to discourage people from buying illegal fireworks. I gave you a sample of the flyer. And I thought it was at the very end of the meeting and it had been forgotten, but I stood up and I went like, and I don't see it on the agenda.
I think in the mailing, um, yearly chief of, um, correct me if I'm wrong, we get, um, something in our, uh, water bill about fireworks.
Yes.
And so this was another one, um, six months.
Because we want to discourage people from buying illegal fireworks. So this says before you buy illegal fireworks. Okay, I can pass these out to you again.
Is there a councilperson that wishes to pull an item, uh, for discussion, further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to pull the warrants.
Warrants?
B, let's be.
Okay. Is there any public request to pull an item? That we know of? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar minus B?
I'll make a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar minus B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, item B, uh, Ms. Vegas.
I wanted to, uh, actually Todd, this might be for you, this is on page twenty. Um, the warrant for the ITech Solutions, um, are outside ITech people. The, let's see, the bill, the warrant this time was for, um, eight thousand dollars and hmm. My question is, uh, eight thousand is a, a chunk of change. And as we continue to grow, I'm wondering whether you're considering, uh, hiring an onsite IT person.
Hundred percent absolutely been thinking about that. I think it's time to entertain that, I think, um, cost wise, I think it would make a lot of sense. And I think we get more service out of having an in-house hire to help manage things that come up that, you know, are, you know, we're running around trying to fix. And, um, I just think it's a good time to look into that, to develop a job description and then come forward with that for seeking approval from the council.
Do you have a rough timeframe?
No, I've been talking with HR, we, we've both been meeting on it and, um, now that, um, like I said to you, um, I think we'll put, this will put some sauce to it.
Juice.
So juice, yeah, juice. So I, I think, so I think it's very important that, um, I've been thinking about this for a long time and I really want to do this.
Yeah, the eight thousand kind of jumps out a little bit.
Yes.
That was it. Can I, can I, can I say something on that? Um, does that eight thousand dollars include, uh, this trainings and things that they're providing to the staff? So it's in a, so that's just for the support.
It's extra for anything they do.
Got it.
To be honest with you, I think it's, it's, it's highly, it's very expensive.
Okay, yeah, I agree with that.
I mean, they're good.
Well, they better be.
Well, they're not good, actually.
Okay, well. Be careful what you say.
Yeah, be careful what I say.
All right, is there, uh, a motion to approve item B in consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve item B.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, thank you. Uh, next item is management reports, uh, city administrator, information only.
Yeah, being that the, the agenda is very full, I'm gonna pass and move on to allow the chief to talk and, and get the other agenda items.
Okay, any questions of him before that? Okay.
I have a couple of things. Um, just because you deal with everything, um, there's been graffiti and this might be a cash, chief cash item, but there's been graffiti on a wall over on Pioneer for about three weeks. So I just want to note that maybe we can get maintenance on that. And then, um.
Pioneer.
And second, Pioneer and second.
Second here and Pioneer. And then the marquee, do we have any, uh, plans to update that? I feel like we were updating it quite a bit, uh, with our previous wreck and parks manager, but now it hasn't been, so it just seems a little stagnant.
Because a lot of the programming is more or less on pause, once we get somebody in new, we'll start activating that more.
And how's that going?
Pretty good.
Good.
Yeah.
Um, yes, go ahead.
I just want to add on the graffiti, I had mentioned once before that it had been cleared on the pedestrian bridge.
Hmm.
It, it's back on the, there's more graffiti, it's on the top level.
We need a camera on that. Go ahead, chief.
We just ordered those, the cameras, yeah. That's part of the plan, also on second.
You ordered cameras for what, chief?
The, um, bridge area, so we can oversee that and the park and also second. Uh, the wall you're talking about, that's a, that's private property and we've spoken with them before and they're taking care of it. But there's been other issues, because that's a, that's very, um, used location, because the, the bus stop, children walking through there. So yes, those two areas have, have, have been cited as far as what we're gonna do.
Thank you. Okay, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Um, per my report, uh, our Guadalupe Fire Strike Team, uh, returned after twelve days assisting with the wildfires down in Los Angeles. Um, I did a debrief with our captain, um, today. And I gotta do with the engineer later on, uh, you know, we found some things that, uh, we need to help with, um, back here and also as far as rotation. Um, so that makes sure that our, our employees get the rest that they do need. Um, we're preparing for the notification for, um, as far as the committee, uh, for emergency preparedness training. Also looking, uh, I'm hoping to present to, uh, council, maybe for next budget year, um, to, uh, backfill that vacant position. But we'll be doing, um, training, especially since, um, even though there's a court order to stop some of the funding, but with the aspect of, um, possibly FEMA, either going away or being somehow restructured by the federal government, a lot more is being placed on our shoulders to kind of, to prepare. So we're, we're, we're looking at those kind of aspects. We're looking to do, uh, with the Santa Barbara, uh, County Fire Chiefs Association discussed, wrapping up the, uh, mutual aid for the Los Angeles area and preparing, um, county information to campaign on clearing defensive spaces around residential areas and businesses to help, uh, prevent wildfires. The other things is, uh, we put together, um, stats for the city council, um, retreat for goal setting, um, that we were directed to as far as, uh, for the fire department and the police department. Um, so we have, uh, stats that we'll be able to provide for council members when we have that retreat. And the last part is we've received, uh, this is an ongoing issue, but we finally looked at our municipal code, uh, concerning trash cans that are left in the streets, uh, days after pickup and some that are used to block parking. Um, we do have a way to kind of handle that. Um, uh, we saw a, um, a portion of our municipal code that would give our city administrator, um, the authority to, to, uh, put some time limits on when those, uh, containers can be left out in the street. So I'll be meeting with, uh, our city administrator, uh, either this week or early next week to discuss that and be able to present something hopefully to council at our next meeting. With that, that's my report, any questions?
Um, I'm back on the, the, the stats that you put for crimes reported, I had talked about it last time. Uh, you have your, this, this year to date, reported and cleared, and then you have last year to date. As each fiscal year comes, the last column will fall off. So my question is, how long do you keep, um, these stats? And are they reported to anybody else after they fall off of the reports for the council?
For the police department report, part one crimes are usually reported to the FBI. Um, all departments are, are asked to, um, to, to give those, so we just keep it for the year. But I hold on to pretty much everything on a, um, separate thumb drive, so that we can always kind of come back and get stats. But we either go through San Maria, their dispatcher holding a lot of stuff for us. So we have ways to kind of go back to check crime trends if, if that was, if I answered your, your question correctly.
Yeah, I was looking at it, if somebody wanted to go back and say for the last five years, would you have that information or you're saying now dispatch and Santa Maria would have that?
Matter of fact, I got it right here on the table for the last five years. Uh, that's the stuff that we're gonna be supplying to the city council for the, uh, retreat.
Coincidental?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
I just wanted to kind of, uh, hone in on you mentioning the stats. And, and I've, I've asked the chief, um, for a variety of reasons, in preparation, in preparation for, uh, goal setting, is that where are most of our calls for health and fire? Where the, where's the derivative, where are they coming from? And one of the, one of the items that, that I think all people know is most, our fire department is here, right next to us. And the other one is on the other side of town, which is further north. And the majority of our population now has shifted to the south. And the goal, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is the goal is to respond to an emergency within four minutes. And, uh, I think it's time for us to look at how do we make sure that our community is safe by having, um, personnel located in an area that's close, like in the center of town or further south. But anyway, that's what the, the, uh, chief mentioned in terms of stats. Wanted to know, uh, first of all, the numbers, most of them are health. And then, uh, the locations, so that we're able to respond in a, in a timely manner, so thank you, chief. Uh, the next item, um, any questions out there of the chief, well, from the public? Okay, next item is public hearing, consideration, consider a conditional use permit twenty twenty four dash five four CUP to allow vehicle tow and storage yard on forty seven, four thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot property in MC Industrial Commercial Zoning District three oh one, Guadalupe Street, APN one one five dash one six three dash zero one three. Mr. Scott, your answer.
Thank you, mayor, thank you, city council, good evening. Um, again, the project before you is a conditional use permit, oh, do we have, uh, somebody who's gonna turn the pages? Beautiful, thank you so much. Uh, and again, it is a conditional use permit, um, for an auto tow and storage yard. And, um, next page, please. Um, the applicant, Mr. Jason Sahagan, president, Central City Towing, based in Santa Maria. He is requesting a conditional use permit to allow an outdoor store, outdoor vehicle tow and storage yard on the forty seven hundred fifty square foot property. Property is located three oh one Guadalupe Street. It's located in the MC Industrial Commercial Zoning District. The municipal code, the, the zoning ordinance specifies section eighteen forty thirty D. It requires a conditional use permit to allow screened outdoor storage in the MC Industrial Commercial Zone. There goes a conditional use permit and it does emphasize screened outdoor storage in the code. Next page, please. That's a view from Guadalupe Street, very narrow property. And, um, to me, it looks pretty good from Guadalupe Street, which is a good thing. So it's about twenty five feet wide, next slide, please. Aerial view, um, I think that was taken twenty twenty two. At that time, there was some storage activity, so I guess over the years, there has been storage off and on. Um, there's a railroad car there that's been there for a number of years. Um, again, a couple of things to note, access from Guadalupe Street. There's, uh, also access from an alley and we'll talk about that a little bit more. Um, again, the area is zoned MC Industrial Commercial, so the property is kind of sandwiched on both sides by similar industrial commercial uses. And residential neighborhood on the, uh, west side and the transit center is probably about three hundred feet north easterly. Um, next slide, please. Uh, view of the site, paved, concrete paving, that's a good thing. Um, next slide, please. Another view that's looking west, uh, again, you can see the railroad car. And, uh, the fact that it's got, um, quality concrete paving is a very good thing. Next slide, please. So we go to the zoning code compliance, um, required by the zoning ordinance screening. The code says any outdoor storage facility should be screened. And, um, we have added a condition to revise, require, um, slats be put in the existing fencing. There is some kind of a tarp kind of material that's, um, already there, but the applicants agreed that it would be better to do the slats, because the, uh, other material kind of blows in the wind. So it would be slatted, which would further screen the, uh, property. Again, paving, the code requires, um, parking and storage to be paved in the site. Already is, we're happy with the existing paving, so no, no, nothing new there. Um, and again, uh, we looked at exiting. The property so narrow, the code requires for industrial and commercial uses, not for residential, but for industrial and commercial uses. You gotta have turnaround onsite. The point is, you can't be backing out onto a street with industrial trucks. Um, the property so narrow, twenty five feet wide, we weren't sure if a tow truck could turn around. So we did add a condition, no backing out. I think they're professional, they probably wouldn't do that anyway, but there is a condition, the conditional use permit, no backing out. Again, they have ingress and egress from Guadalupe, so they would just probably use through, you know, either you enter Guadalupe Street and exit the alley or vice versa. So with those conditions, we believe it's a very good, next slide, uh, please. And again, we do look at the interface when we look at conditional use and we talked about that. Um, the most sensitive uses, uh, you, we can, for storage, we believe it's a good fit. You can see there's existing storage in the MC zone to the south side. it's a good fit. You can see there's existing storage in the MC zone to the south side. Um, the property on the north has storage, across the street has storage. Seems like a good fit, and given the size of the property, it's probably the best use for the property. Um, it's, it's compatible with the residential neighborhood separated by the wall in the alley. And again, it's so narrow, we see no impact visual or otherwise to the transit center. So again, we believe it's a good fit. Next slide, please. Um, for environmental, class one exemption. Um, because the site's already paved, there'll be no physical changes, no physical construction. It's a small site of ne- negligible size. Um, urbanized area, next slide, please. So in summary, as conditioned, the storage yard meets the zoning specifications of the NS MC industrial zone. The use is similar to and compatible with the uh nearby industry uses. And storage is considered to be the best use for the property. Next slide, please. Um, staff is recommending adopt resolution twenty twenty-five oh five. Approving conditional use permit twenty twenty-four oh five four CUP and the SEQA exemption that goes with it for the three oh one Guadalupe Street vehicle storage yard. That concludes uh our presentation. We're available for questions. Thank you. Yes.
Okay, question from the council first before we open it up to the public. Please.
A quick question, and you, you might have already answered it, Bill. Um, in reading this, you're talking, I'm talking about the exit and entering. Um, if I'm visualizing this, you're saying if you, what you said is they can come off of Guadalupe Street or through the alley. And they shouldn't be parked there beyond a certain period of time or towed or remaining in the storage area be beyond a certain period of time. Is that correct?
It's correct. We didn't condition it, so we kind of let them off the hook. That's the condition we could add. They said in the project description, it's for impounded vehicles, and there is a specific time period. We didn't limit it. We kind of looked at it and said if it's run right, we had some other conditions that uh talk about operations, but we didn't limit the time.
Okay.
Can do that if necessary, but we didn't.
No, I, I, I thought I had read that. Um.
Yeah, they, they described it. It's in the staff report.
Okay, it is. Yes, I thought. Uh, so what I was initially envisioning when you were, when I read the staff report that all the vehicles will be facing the same way. I, I envisioned them coming through the alley. And then if they're exiting, they're coming out on Guadalupe Street. But now you're saying they can either come in Guadalupe, so you could have cars in there facing each other? So someone have to back out?
We, we gave them, oh, you can't back out. That's all we did. We put the limitation, absolutely no backing out. How you operate within the site, we try to give um businesses a little bit of latitude. We could, with a conditional use permit, you can be as strict as you want, or you can try to balance it. And so we try to respect the business and give them some latitude. So I guess what we're saying is do what you want within the property, within the parameters. Just don't back out. So you arrange things the way you want them, use it the way you want. If you can turn around, that's fine with us. Just don't back out.
Okay.
So the condition is clear, no backing out.
Got it. Thanks.
I, um, quick question, just on the verbiage, I guess on page two, uh, site access and vehicle maneuvering. The last sentence, would that be exiting the site?
It should be exiting, I think. Yes, because that's the concern. It's not the entering, it's the exiting. So if there may be a typo, I, but yes, exiting, yes.
Perfect.
Thank you.
The question, I can, I'll, I'm gonna rip it up to the public uh, public comments at six twenty-seven. And that's open to the public. Is there anybody from the, the owner that wants to speak? If not, I'll, I'll go ahead and ask a question. Uh, is that storage, that train uh gonna be used for storage? Or is it used now for storage, or do we know?
That's what the property owner suggested. In discussions with uh Mr. Lupi Alvarez, he suggested that would be a good idea. The uh applicant said they'd like to eventually remove the train. And that's what the uh, we, we just said in the report that that's the, the vision, that they would remove it in, in due time. We didn't put a time limit on it. Again, we try to be kind of flexible and, and give them the latitude. We figured the train's been there a while. If you want to use it for storage, that's perfectly fine. If you want to remove it, that's perfectly fine. The only thing we conditioned is if you remove it, there's no paving because it's a railroad track. And if you use it for storage, you wouldn't need to pave it, and that was a requirement by the city engineer as well. So we try to be flexible. If you want to store stuff in there, if you want to keep it, you can. If you want to remove it, you just need to pave.
Well, I didn't see, uh, from the back, from the picture regarding the slats and the coverage, the front looks good, good. You can't see anything. Is the back also uh?
Uh, we didn't, we, you could, it's back there, but it's got similar, but the back is a little bit more worn, meaning it's the same material on all sides right now. It's kind of like this draped um plastic material. But it tends to blow, and it's really blown. I, it, it's, it's a tricky balance. I try to limit the, the photos, to limit the, i- i- you know, yeah. Um, but uh, it's just not as, it's the same material, but it's not i- as good as a condition. So, yeah.
It can get pretty ratty.
Yeah, yeah, and it is in the back, and that's why we said, let's do the slats. It's more permanent.
Now, it's gonna be a slats on the, on the south side, too?
All, all around.
Okay, cool. Any more questions from the council? Any comments from the public? So at eight uh, seven, six twenty-nine, it's closed to public hearing. And what's your wishes of the council? Is there a recommendation to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh five?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero five. One second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Costa Junior is absent. Councilmember Fernandez?
Hi.
Councilmember Vegas?
Hi.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Hi.
Mayor Julian?
Hi, all eyes, uh, it passes, so, thank you. Okay, next item uh is consider map twenty twenty-nine dash zero seven one tentative track. Tentative parcel map twenty twenty-four dash zero three six dash LS to subsidize, subdivide a point five three acre parcel into two lots located in the mixed use zoning district six four zero seven one eight Guadalupe Street, APN one one five dash one four oh dash oh four. Mr. Scott?
Thank you again, Mayor, um, council, and I agree. This one's kind of a mouthful. I struggle with it myself, but it is a tentative parcel map to subdivide um a, next pa- li- next slide, let's get into the project description. Um, so again, the property owner, Mr. Carlos Castaneda requests a tentative parcel map to subdivide a twenty-three thousand seventy-four square foot parcel into two lots. The resulting parcels would be um parcel one, it's labeled parcel one, nine thousand four hundred nineteen square feet. The other parcel, parcel two, thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty-five square feet. Next slide, please. The property owner's objective is uh, the property is currently occupied by a single family home on the north side and three duplex buildings on the south side of the property. The applicant has expressed a desire to separate and sell the home site. Um, we looked at the county records, and the buildings are pretty old. The county building permit records indicate buildings were constructed roughly uh nineteen, late nineteen fifties, early nineteen sixties. Next slide, please. Um, aerial view, a little faded, but uh you can see the site, um Guadalupe Street, uh, east side, kind of traversed by Seventh Street over there. Um, but again, there's the home on the north side of the property, and then where it says site, the three little duplexes with the parking. Next slide, please. That's the existing home. Next slide, please. And that's the three duplexes, if you could see it, and I'm sure everybody's pretty familiar with it. Next slide, please. And that's uh a detail of the map. So that's the map. Uh, we kind of enhanced it just so it would pop a little bit, but you could see the new property line, um, then that, that parcel would be labeled parcel one moving forward. And the uh house again would be separated from the three duplexes on parcel two. Next slide, please. So we get into the code compliance, and we looked at uh subdivision ordinance, zoning ordinance, general plan, what we typically do. In terms of the subdivision ordinance, it um checks all the boxes. The subdivision ordinance uh establishes a minimum lot size. The lots meet it. The subdivision ordinance uh establishes a lot depth to wi- the width ratio. Lots need to be a certain kind of uniform shape. They can't be irregular. The subdivision meets it. Um, all lots must have vehicle ac- access after the subdivision. Uh, this, the, both lots would meet that code, so the lot meets the subdivision ordinance. Next slide, please. Zoning ordinance, um, the zoning, the property is zoned mixed use. Um, um, so we looked at the purpose of the mixed use zone, um, that Guadale- whole entire Guadalupe street corridor on that north, north end is zoned. It's kind of a special strategy area. We'll talk about, but again, it's zone mixed use. The intent of the zone is to promote downtown Guadalupe as a commercial, civic, and cultural focal point. And that's only a part of it. You have to kind of go to the ordinance to get the whole, but that's the summary. And the permitted uses in the mixed use zone, primarily commercial uses with limited types of residential. The types of residential uses envisioned under the mixed use zone are residential on the second floor, like condominiums and apartments above commercial. Or in certain parts of that area, higher density townhomes or condominiums can be established on the ground floor. So the uh mixed use zone establishes more intensive types of uh uh residential uses and, and primarily commercial uses. Next slide, please. And that just shows um the location, the site within the downtown. You see the big mix up there and all that orange area, again, along the Guadalupe corridor. Zone downtown mixed use and the site within that area. Next slide, please. So the zoning code compliance. The existing homes, the single family house and the duplexes are not the type of residential permitted under the mixed use zone. But again, they're existing, they're established, they've been there a long time. Existing buildings predate the mixed use zone. Therefore, they are legal, non-conforming, grandfathered in. They may continue indefinitely. My only concern is a planner. They're probably sixty years old. Um, they should be maintained, just an opinion. But there's no conflict with the zoning ordinance in terms of use. Next slide, please. Um, that just shows uh the new property line to respect building codes. And there's a fence, you, it's kind of hard to see where that shadow is up at the top. So they slid the property line over a little bit to get it away from the house on the left-hand side. That's to me, building code regulations. As they do that, they kind of split the yard area down at the bottom of the duplexes, so it got chopped. The, the yard for this, a little bit of the duplex site would be transferred to the single family home site. We looked at code compliance, the code, the zoning ordinance does say there's a minimum yard side for uh uh yard size for uh multifamily units. But in terms of setbacks, and in terms of yard size, and in terms of development standards, the lot split would still meet the zoning ordinance development standards. So the duplex site would shrink a little bit, but it would still meet zoning. So use-wise and development standard-wise, the lot split would still meet the zoning ordinance. Next slide, please. Now, the general plan. The property has a general plan land use designation of downtown mixed use, similar to the zoning. And again, um, the downtown mixed use is primarily commercial designation. The general plan states, the purpose is to promote downtown Guadalupe as a fully commercial, civic, and cultural focal point for the city. And the permitted uses are primarily retail, commercial, service banks, and entertainment under the general plan designation. Next slide, please. And again, the downtown mixed use, um, general plan designation allows limited residential. Two types, similar to what the uh, the zoning says. Second floor only residential condominiums, stacked flats, apartments above ground floor commercial, or again, in limited areas, ground floor townhomes and apartments. So the general plan, um, land use designation in the zoning ordinance said the same thing. Those type of uh residential and commercial would be the vision for the area. Next slide, please. And that just shows the general plan land use map, and again, the corridor and where that property is within the corridor, the purple area is all um designated downtown mixed use by the general plan. Again, that's the um Guadalupe Street corridor for that area and the vision for that area. Next slide, please. And one other part of the general plan, there's a neighborhood map in the general plan. It's called, the neighborhood map is called the central business district, CBD, commercial neighborhood district. The general plan says the purpose of the CBD is bringing new residents into the area to become customers of the business enterprises in the district. And the CBD has a, is a revitalization strategy that says over time, the smaller, single-story constructs, uh, construction or underutilized property should be replaced with higher density, mixed use townhomes, those kinds of uses. Again, the general plan is a vision. Um, it's the twenty forty-two general plan. It's a policy document, and unlike the zoning, um, we don't have to adhere to it, but we suggest we should consider it strongly if that's the vision. Next slide, please. And that just shows the property within the central business district, the CBD, uh, that red area, a lo- up and along the Guadalupe corridor. Next slide, please. So general plan consistency. On one hand, staff believes that the smaller lots that would be created by this subdivision would probably lessen the likelihood of redevelopment as envisioned by the downtown mixed use general plan designation in the CBD overlay. Meaning typically, the kind of higher density, mixed use com- commercial, those types of development that the general plan envisioned, you'd, you'd probably combine lots or make bigger lots, not smaller lots, but that's just a consideration. On the other hand, there are policies in the general plan that say protect existing affordable housing. So the general plan documents are typically uh full of competing policies, and we could call those competing policies in this particular case. But again, the likelihood of future development might be lessened with smaller lots, once the lots are separated and sold off. And again, who can predict whether a developer would come in within the timeframe of the general plan or not? I, nobody can, I guess, but uh, again, that's what the general plan says. Next slide, please. And again, we just um, that just kind of shows what the lot split would look like uh roughly, and you could see on the right-hand side, there's a kind of a higher densider, higher density uh project, and you could see y- you need more space for the higher density, and on the left side across Guadalupe, you see the single family homes, so the, the smaller lots would be more similar to the single family home sites than it would be to the um higher density project site. So again, just a consideration. Next slide, please. So in summary, the lot split fully meets the subdivision ordinance. The lot split would not conflict with the zoning ordinance in terms of development standards or land uses. In terms of the general plan, the subdivision would create smaller lots that may be less likely to redevelop in the future as invented, as envisioned under the general plan. However, the lot split may support objectives to maintain existing affordable housing. Um, and lastly, the lot split would support the applicant's goal to uh support uh, uh, to separate the home site from the duplex site. Next slide, please. The project is a class fifteen exemption, applies to minor subdivisions. Next slide, please. In support of the landlord's, landowner's request, planning staff is recommending adopt resolution twenty twenty-five oh six approving tentative parcel map twenty-nine oh seven one. City filed twenty twenty-four oh three six LA LS and the SEQA exemption for the six forty, seven eighteen Guadalupe Street lot split. That concludes our presentation. We're available for questions. Thank you.
Can you go back one slide that shows the land? That one. And you're the expert on planning. Can you put ADUs on either of those sites?
You could easily put an ADU on the single family home site. You probably couldn't fit one. You, you might be able to fit one on, but there, up in that upper corner that's used for uh open space on the duplex site. You could probably put an ADU uh on both of them. And all, the problem with an ADU is access and parking, because it's, it's pretty narrow in there, but physically, you probably could, yes.
All right, just a question.
Yeah.
At, any questions? Yeah, Chris, yeah? At the six forty, six forty-four, we'll open it to the public for public comments. At, uh, six forty, six forty-four, we'll open it to the public for public comments. And we ha- we have, uh, Christina, Christina wishes to speak, okay, okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm here today to request your approval for the tentative parcel map. At six forty and seven eighteen Guadalupe Street that you just heard about. Uh, this request aligns with recent state initiatives to address housing shortages and provide, uh, promote more flexible land use. Specifically under California Senate bills nine, four fifty and six hundred and eighty-four. The lot split will not only comply with state laws, but it will also help meet local housing needs, stimulate the economy and provide more affordable housing options. We believe this development is a reasonable step forward in supporting our community's growth. While the city's general plan promotes future use of this section of town as potential commercial or residential development. It's currently home to seven families and is serving immediate housing supply objectives. We're not developers and we're not in a position to, um, uh, design and build a new complex from the ground up on this property. Our budget for this project is seventy-five hundred dollars. Our passion is helping farm working families obtain homeownership. So we can continue in our mission to do that by dividing this property into two lots. And eventually selling the single family residence, um, to a good, uh, family at an affordable price. It's also possible that we may seek approval for an ADU, um, as you suggested, Mayor, in the future, which would help increase the housing stock. I respectfully ask for your approval to subdivide this parcel. I'd also like to acknowledge what a pleasure this process has been with the city of Guadalupe. From Alice and Bill and the planning department and the staff in your accounting office. Um, I've heard horrible stories from colleagues from other cities and counties. Where they're attempting to do, um, projects such as this and they're only to be met with unhelpful staff. Unable to get a hold of anybody, extreme difficulty and constant roadblocks and, and gaining approval. And so this shitty should be a role model for, for others. So thank you again for your time tonight.
Thank you. Any, any questions of the applicant? Any further comments?
No, that's okay. Um, how long have you owned the property?
Um, probably two years, probably about two years.
And your intention is to keep the, all of the homes that are on both right now, both.
Initially, yeah, and then what we do is, is we work in the farming industry. And so we try to find properties that, that we could help, um, our farm working families buy into. And these are families that otherwise wouldn't be able to ever obtain homeownership. So if we can designate a property where we can offer it at a reduced price. And that's our, that's our goal is to help, is to help our local farm working community.
Have you done this in any other cities?
We have, not so much as like doing a subdivision, but as far as getting, um, homes and then selling them to our, to our, um, farm working families.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any further public comments? Oh, you're not, you're not commenting chief, we're just coming, okay, okay. Um, so at seven forty-seven, close it to public, uh, public comment. Six forty-seven, sorry. Um, I just wanted to echo what, um, Christina mentioned. And, uh, uh, Bill also mentioned this, we have a general plan from twenty, uh, twenty to twenty forty-two. And, uh, I think I, I do echo what we, we've seen here in these last two, um, efforts. Is that we're going by the plan, we're going by our general plan and a general plan, if anybody wants to know what we're gonna do in, to twenty twenty forty-two. Look at the general plan, cause that sets the tone for where we want to be. And there's a lot of infield that's going on that's required by our general plan. And by the needs of our, the local residents, so, uh, given that is a, a motion to adopt the. The resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution twenty twenty-four zero six L S.
Is there a second? Go ahead and.
My second.
Okay, any discussion? Now roll call, please.
Council member Costa Junior is absent. Council member Fornaz?
Here.
Council member Vegas?
I.
Council member Hernandez? Mayor Julian.
Hi, uh, is approved. Thank you. All right, moving right along. Item eleven. Consider a design review permit twenty twenty-four dash zero five seven dash D R for the Eighth Street Apartments. A seven-unit multifamily development on point seven five acre parcel in the R three high-density residential zoning district. At forty-six forty-six Eighth Street, A P N one one five dash one two one dash zero one zero. Mr. Scott.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Again, um, project before you is the Eighth Street Apartments. Next slide, please. Get right to the meat of it. Um, the project to the applicant, Ms. Tina Mucat. I'll, I'll let her pronounce her name, but, uh, is representing Masani Property LLC is requesting a design review per- permit. Approval of, um, the, the file number twenty twenty-four oh five seven D R. Um, the project proposes to construct seven new apartments in addition to six existing apartments. Total thirteen unit, um, thirteen apartments on the property. Um, the unit arrangement would be new apartments that consist of three new ground floor units. And four new upper floor apartments over parking. Next slide, please. Uh, the property, zero point seven five acre property in the R three high-density residential zoning district at four six four six Eighth Street. Um, municipal code section eighteen seventy-three oh, uh, one oh six. Require a city council approval of a design review permit to allow more than three apartment units in the R three zone. And again, the project site's partially developed by a six-unit apartment building according to permits. It was, uh, the existing building was built roughly mid-sixties. Next, uh, slide, please. And again, the project site, um, H Street, the Westerly terminus, a very street opposite Pioneer Street. You can see the, uh, existing six-unit building on the Westerly side of the property, which, uh, leaves the Easterly. Or the right-hand portion for development. Um, again, the property is kind of on the, uh, west side of downtown. Agriculture uses on the west side of the property. Next slide, please. Just looking, uh, Pioneer Street, there's another, maybe we call it a companion project under construction. Think that's called the Edwards Apartments, Edwards Pioneer Street Apartments. So it's good to see that a lot of these little tiny sites with tiny projects, hopefully they add up to, uh. It result in a lot of units, so that's under construction down the street. Uh, next slide, please. That's the existing six-unit building. Next slide, please. That's kind of looking south from a street. Um, again, um, this property, this, uh, was developed. This property was developed roughly nineteen sixties, mid-sixties under what we sent, uh, found was a county building permit. Which shows the difference in old county development standards where you just use a building permit in modern development standards. So I'm kind of proud of current development standards. Next slide, please. And again, the site, um, as it exists currently. Next slide, please. Um, west side looking from the, uh, agriculture fields, existing fence. Uh, next slide, please. And now we get to the site plan, uh, the proposed project. Um, this is actually the landscape plan, but it pops a little better than the site plan. Um, like obviously they're, they're this, one and the same. Um, Eighth Street on the right-hand side, um, which is the north. And then, um, the existing apartment up there at the top, the six-unit building at the top. And then the new apartment buildings on the south si- on the west side of the property, um, on the bottom. Uh, east side, I apologize, on the east side of the property on the bottom. And then a couple of new ground floor units you could see just to the south side of the existing, uh, six-unit building. I will note that, uh, according to my research, the property on the south side. On the left-hand side is owned by the city of Guadalupe. You can see the fire department has endorsed, um, an emergency exit driveway there. There is a condition that says, um, prior to any construction that, um, all our agreements would have to be, uh, reached with the city. Before there's any driveway or any use of that property, but that is, um, uh, endorsed by the fire department to have that driveway. Uh, on the city property there. And again, you can see, um, the rest of the plan, um, landscaping, new landscaping or along the Eighth Street frontage. There's a couple of little outdoor, um, seating areas that we'll talk about a little bit, twenty-nine's parking spaces. Next slide, please. Typical floor plans are all similar. The sizes might be slightly different, but two-bedroom, one bath. Uh, kitchen, living, dining combination with small patios or decks. So that's pretty typical. Next slide, please. So we get into municipal code compliance, as always, parking eighteen sixty fifty, twenty-six spaces required. The code says two parking spaces per unit, one must be covered. Um, they're providing twenty-nine spaces, nine covered, which addresses the new, the, um, seven new units. And, uh, twenty-nine parking spaces does meet or exceed the twenty-six space requirement. Parking works, building setbacks work that we always look at. Private yards, we said substantially conform with the zoning ordinance. Private yards, in terms of private yards, the code says for ground floor apartments, and there's three ground floor apartments. There should be a, a little private outdoor space, a little patio. It should be about, uh, at least a hundred feet, a hundred square feet with a dimension, a minimum dimension of eight feet. So the code says private yard, hundred square feet. In this case, the private yards for the three ground floor apartments is about seventy-two square feet. Slightly deficient, but in this particular case, we looked at some of the other improvements provided by the project. As well as the fact that they're providing common outdoor area, which is above and beyond the code. So we found that that meets the code substantially and, uh, we're satisfied with the slightly smaller private yards. Um, landscape, the code says ten percent, um, coverage is required. The project provides twenty percent and we believe the distribution of the landscaping is good. The code requires walls and, um, there's a new wall that will be constructed, or a fence or wall that we'll define later at, um. Before the building permits stage, uh, they show a composite fence, which, uh, as I researched is a durable material. And that might be satisfactory. Um, we'll talk about the fence a little more, but, um, maybe we make it a little higher than six feet. We'll look at that in more detail later, but the fence does conform. Access twenty-five foot wide dr- driveway was endorsed by the fire department and the city engineer. Next slide.
Can I stop you right there?
Absolutely.
On that, on the last access point, is it, is it just for the turnaround or is it a drive-through?
Uh, I believe it's a, I believe it's just a turnaround. It's my, yeah, that's my understanding. I think it was to satisfy a fire department.
If you look at one of the slides, number four, I don't know where I went with that, but. It almost butts up to the back of, uh, Rubio Street. But I don't know if that, I don't, if it's just for the turnaround, that's fine. Uh, you know, I think it's fine anyway.
Yeah.
But it'd be interesting, I don't know if you'd want traffic going through from the other side, so that's, that's cool, I think.
Typically, and again, we can, we can define that, we'll, we'll make a note of that and, and further define exactly what it is. And then maybe we'll get back to Todd if there's any question, but, um, uh, ti- typically, um. It would be a turnaround, it's usually emergency. Typically, emergency egress when there's, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you. No, no, I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, next slide, please. So we, we did look at the improvements again, um, in my, in my view, again. Uh, original six-unit building approved by the county under a building permit nineteen sixty-five roughly. Um, this project will come in, pave the driveway and parking. Apply common outdoor areas, picnic tables, seating areas, new lighting, new fence, new wall. And the existing apartments, we'll get some exterior improvements, spruce them up a little bit, make them look a little better. We'd encourage the builder to also, um, maybe look at the inside, but, uh, they will spruce up the existing apartments at least visually. Um, next slide, please. So the elevations, um, that's looking east, the new apartments, and you can see, uh, now a paved parking lot. And, uh, again, the building, uh, looking east across the property. Next slide, please. Um, that's looking west from, say you were downtown, um, looking at the property. So looking west, kind of the backside. Next slide, please. Um, looking from the south side, and it's kind of hard to see, but you can see, uh, the new. I, I mean, the existing, uh, units on the, uh, left-hand side would kind of be spruced up a little bit. Um, next slide, please. Bike racks also, and again, looking, uh. South from A Street and, um, new enc- new trash enclosure. Um, Bill, and again, you can better see that the existing apartments on the right-hand side would be, uh, kind of improved a little bit exterior. Exterior improvements. Next slide, please. Again, new fence, uh, wall, durable composite material. Uh, again, I, I noted the word durable when I just kind of looked at what is this material, maybe the app- applicant could elaborate more. But from our perspective, it's a substantial improvement. But again, the next step is we could move to a, a final zoning clearance and a building permit. And at that time, we kind of hash out details a little bit more specifically in terms of material. So that's when we'd rather really refine that, but it's definitely an improvement in our minds. So new fence, new wall. Next slide, please. And that's the, one of the, 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 I mean, a couple of the ground floor units, uh, what they look like. And it's hard to see the little picnic tables, seating areas in the front. Next slide, please. Another angle, um, again, the ground floor units with the outdoor seating areas and landscaping. Next slide. Thank you, and that's, um, another elevation of the new apartments over the carports. Looking kind of southeasterly from, uh, Eighth Street. Next slide. So in summary, in conclusion, the project, project supports general plan objectives. To redevelop underutilized properties where city services are already in place. Again, the project will add seven new multifamily housing units, small project, but something in convenient proximity to public transit. Downtown goods and services. Project will make substantial improvements that will benefit the existing residents of, of the property as well as future residents. Next slide, please. In terms of sequel, the project's a class thirty-two exemption. That applies to infill development under less than five acres in size. Where you reuse underutilized sites within the city limits. And there's no sensitive wildlife habitat in the area. Next slide, please. So with that, staff is recommending that city council adopt resolution twenty twenty-five oh seven. To approve design review permit twenty twenty-four fifty-seven D R and the environmental notice of exemption. For the forty-six forty-six A Street apartment project. This would conclude our presentation. Thank you very much. We're available for questions.
Okay, well, uh, any questions before we open it?
A quick question about the, uh, does the property owner own the existing apartments? The ones that were built in the sixties or?
I believe you say they've, they've agreed to all the conditions, so that's my understanding, because again, it's one property. It, it, you, you know, it's one property owner, so.
Do you know, I, I mean, you've mentioned many times and you can see in the pictures that they're, and, and if they were built in the sixties, that there's, um. Uh, it's, it, to my mind, it's gonna look very odd. You can have these apartments that were built and perhaps, I'm, I'm assuming maybe not maintained. Um, a lot, and then you can have a brand new structure. Um, and just by the pictures and the design, it's gonna look very stark, the, the differences. So I guess a, a long way of asking that question, wh- do you have any sense of the property owner, uh, improving the existing apartments? So there isn't that stark difference.
Uh, again, we talked about that, the, the improvements we agreed on are exterior to kind of repaint and kind of refurbish the outside. To tie to the, um, the new apartments. Um, we encourage more. But, um, that, so we ask for exterior, but we strongly encourage more. And the, I think the, the builder and the owner is here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and we did have strong conditions about site maintenance, maintaining the property. So those conditions are in the design review permit that address maintenance.
Whitney, any question? Go ahead, Todd.
Maybe I missed it in the staff report, but does, within our design review standards, do we, um, require certain color schemes? Kind of textured material, you know, product mix and that kind of thing. I'm thinking it looks really attractive, but I was just curious.
Absolutely, that, yes, thank you, Todd. That is part of the design review. In this case, we let the project architect put forward the design and we accepted it. But it can always be modified, addressed, adjusted, or, you know, tweaked in any kind of way. But again, given the location and the presentation they did, we liked the tile roof. And the colors we think are pretty good. And so, yes, that's, that's a. Specific finding of design review is that the colors and materials and the architecture should be fitting for the site. And it can always be adjusted, but we found it satisfactory in this particular case. If they take the existing apartments and make them look a little bit better as well.
Thank you.
Okay, it's seven oh, do you have a question?
Will the previous tenants have access to the new open spaces?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Good question, but absolutely is my understanding. That's part of the, that's part of the layout, that's part of the design. To everything that's common, that the existing tenants would have access to. Parking, you can open and the open space areas. And the developer, project builder, maybe want to elaborate a bit more. But I do agree, maintenance is huge. Thank you.
Okay, seven oh five will open up to public hearing. So is the, the designer and the owner wish to, welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Greg Revad. I'm the project architect. Lot of good questions. Bill did a, first of all, Bill did a fantastic presentation. He, he takes all the work away. Nothing for me to do, but I can answer a few questions. Maybe, maybe I'll just start with the, the context of what we have. Yeah, we have some older units that have been continuously rented for. Is that gonna be like sixty years almost? I, I don't know, something like that. Well used. We have dirt parking lot, empty lot, we're right on the edge of the fields, as you know, so it's, it's a little rough. And so the intent of the owner, and the owner is here tonight, I don't know if she's going to speak, she's available, but we'll see. Anyway, I think I can answer most of the questions that you have. So what, what this is, is that it's a total upgrade. You know, we don't want to tear down the building. It's, it's existing. Really valuable rental stock. It's, it's, we have existing families who we don't want to displace. But we'd like to build a new parking lot. We'd like to provide new landscaping, new open space fencing, which is gonna give them privacy. And then as far as the building upgrades, for now, we haven't talked about much on the interiors at the moment. Because we don't want to displace anybody, right? We fix up the interiors, you got to move people out. We don't want to do that. So what we want to do is do the exterior. We've discussed, it's a brand new paint scheme. That's gonna match the existing buildings and that may not sound like much, but it actually can do quite a bit. With new landscaping and new sidewalks and parking spaces. That would be all to modern standards. And then also these open spaces, you know, it's, it's kind of the way everything goes nowadays. We want to have to develop some outdoor open space. People need that, they want it, they don't really have it right now. I mean, if you look at what they're doing, they have, they've kind of like made do. But this will give us some actual good upgraded space. The buildings themselves, I mean, we're primarily, you know, we have to design around parking because we're planning for modern standards. Like right now, they don't have any designated spaces. So we're gonna have designated spaces, we're gonna have some, quite a bit of covered parking, a little bit more than I think is required, if I'm correct. And we have a few more extra spaces. It's not super overparked, but we're not asking for any parking reductions in this case. The buildings are pretty nice. I mean, they kind of match a lot of what. You know, I think of as Guadalupe, I, I'm familiar with a lot of the buildings in the town over the years. And, you know, we have nice tile roofs, stucco, good windows, good doors. We've got balconies, we've got private balconies for all the two story units. We designed a couple of the units on the ground floor, mainly because we could fit them. So we've got those little, the new little buildings. Next to the existing ones, so we're kind of hoping that will all kind of blend in together. And we didn't want to, you know, really overdesign it. And by the way, I mean, the owners and our firm worked together to come up with, you know, a, a pretty good. Layout that would be good for a small family. So there's, these are all two bedroom, two, two bedroom, one bath living room. And we've built these in other communities and they, they seem to work pretty well for small families. As opposed to trying to design for, for singles or couples, their family oriented. So the, the opportunity there was to design a couple of units where we can get some small yards in front, even though they're kind of shared, some of it's shared. But you do have some small yards. And then the existing units, they do have yards behind them. And so we are gonna work with Bill on that. I'm not sure what we're exactly gonna do in those backyards. But right now, if you go by and look there, it's, I don't know, rough comes to mind. So I could think of this. They're a little rough. Some are nice, some are nice. There's some cars parked on A Street. We're gonna get rid of those, of course. And then the whole fence idea is create privacy for, for the kids and the families. And so what we've been using is a product, is a, I don't know, you guys heard of Trex, you may have a Trex deck. They make a really good fence product and you can buy those in panels and. You know, we haven't got the final okay from Bill, but that's kind of where we're, we're headed. So decent. I think block walls are a little bit too rigid and they are expensive, and so we're trying to keep our costs down. But the Trex is a product, a good product. It's not a super high cost, but you know, the wood fencing just doesn't last, in my opinion. You see a lot of wood fencing going around the projects and, boy, I give them about four years and then they're all starting to fall down and everything. Anyway, a landscape, I think we've done a pretty good job with the landscaping. We're putting trees. Basically where they're gonna provide shade and, you know. And I think about it, where, you know, where we're coming from now with the, the way the site looks now. And if you can imagine that improved with the landscaping, I think it's gonna be pretty nice, especially on A Street. And then we've got that funny little triangle. The turnaround, interestingly enough, is a T turn that meets the city standards. We're not looking at a drive through on the adjacent property. We've discussed it, but at that, this point, that lot is gonna stay. Vacant. We don't have any plans for it right now. I don't, I think that's, is that the case? Right now, there's no plans for that adjacent lot. So we just put the turnaround in because that's where we could fit it. We'll have a reciprocal easement for that. I hope I covered everything. If you guys have questions, I'm certainly open for any questions.
Whitney, go ahead, Todd.
I don't want to belabor the discussion too long, but does our design standards for the landscaping require a certain caliper tree in diameter? Do you know, Bill?
I don't know. Bill knows.
Landscaping material? Just curious.
Yeah, thank you, Todd. I, I think we condition, it's, it's a box size and I think it's a gallon. I think we call for fifteen gallons. So it's not the caliper, it's the, the size of the, the box that it comes in. And that's pretty typical, fifteen gallon minimum.
Got a question. The pros and cons of a carport. Now, on the existing property on the north side, there's a cement pad. And right now, there's a car that shouldn't be there, but there's, what about a car, a car cover carport on that side? Just thinking about it. I don't know the pros and cons of what it, what it costs to have that and the upkeep on that. You know what I'm talking about? Right on the, right, right where butts into Pioneer Street. There's in the existing, in the existing departments.
Existing apartments, you're talking about providing carports for the existing?
Yeah, I think there's only one or two. Areas where you can park a car.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so you know, we've got, got no numbers, but I think it's.
Where the other side?
We got nine covered. Yeah, so I know what you're saying.
Yeah, just, I think you went by it. Yeah, just the picture of it. See, right where that white car is on the, on the right side, I think there's cement there. Just thinking aloud in terms of having a, you know, a cover for that, but you know, if that's not part of the design, it's not part of the design, and if it's not required, it's not required.
Mr. Mayor, right now, what, what, it's not shown real clear, but that's where one of the outdoor seating areas and the landscaping would go. Carports could have been, could be a possibility because there are. Where that black car is sitting, there'd be a row of parking spaces on both sides. It's not shown clearly on the landscape. So carports could be possible. It's, it could be considered.
Well, as, as, as long as there's off-street parking there, you know, I don't want to deter having people going on the outside, so. So at what time, seven fifteen? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm Tina. Yeah, please.
Yeah, here's Tina, here's the boss.
I, I didn't prepare anything to say, but I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Tina Mukai, owner and one of the partners of Mosetani Properties. Which owns this existing apartments here. We initially started the project because, well, the levy broke, right? And that area was, you know, potentially subject to flooding during a couple of years ago. And so we really wanted to fix the drainage issues there and we also wanted to build a paved driveway and then it's kind of exploded into this, this, you know. Improvement here. We're a longtime family in Guadalupe, you probably know, and we have a vested interest in beautifying the town. And so I hope you like what we, what, what Greg put together here and consider it for your approval. Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. It was noted that you have no intentions of displacing the current families. Is that?
Okay. And then if you notice, the design is such that in some future date, depending on funds and whatever, it's very easy to replace those existing apartments as well, right? There, there, it's, it doesn't prohibit, the design doesn't prohibit someday.
Yeah, I think you guys designed it very well. I just worry about the families that are living there and whatnot, but it sounds like you guys have a good, you know, thought about that.
Then the property to the south, we, we also own that parcel. And so there, like Greg mentioned, there's no plan to do anything now. It's not a turnaround. It's just an easement for fire, but you know. Yeah, that's.
Right, so the access, yeah. You know, looking at this project is very well designed and you're meeting all the requirements that, that, that are standard. So, good work. So we'll close that, anyone, anybody else out there wants to speak on this? If not, we'll close the public hearing at seven sixteen, bringing it back to the council for any action. Is there a recommendation to adopt resolution twenty twenty five oh seven to approve the design review permit twenty twenty four oh five seven D R? And the environmental notice of exemption for forty six forty six A Street apartment projects?
I'll make a motion to approve, to adopt resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero seven. Approving the design review permit twenty twenty four dash zero five seven dash D R. For the Eighth Street Apartments, including the requisite findings, a sequel exemption and the conditions of approval.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Costa Junior is absent. Councilmember Fernandez. Councilmember Vegas.
Hi.
Councilmember Hernandez. Mayor Julian.
Hi, all eyes. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. All right. Go to item, are we at twelve? Okay, all right. Okay, we're item twelve. Amendment number five to agreement for services between the city of Guadalupe and Andrew Goodman Design, A G D. To partially redesign the plaza area to match the new easement granted to Caltrans. Jeff. Good evening, Jeff.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you. So this item is being brought to you. If you remember, a few months ago, we, the Caltrans came to the city requesting a permanent easement. On the parcel right adjacent to the Royal Theater. They discovered that the property line was about four feet into the sidewalk. So the city council approved the, the permanent easement. Unfortunately, the original design that was done by Andrew Goodwin's design team. Went up to the property line, so it included four feet of the existing sidewalk. But now that we've granted that permanent easement to Caltrans, we have to actually change the design. So it goes to the back of the existing sidewalk instead of to the middle. So it's a pretty minor change to the actual contract. It's, it's less than ten thousand dollars, but we wanted to bring that to you. Also, just so you're aware, their work originally included the removal of the existing driveway approach. And the construction of new sidewalk in there, but Caltrans will be doing that work, so that, that'll be a savings to this project. More than offsetting the cost of these design changes.
Any discussion from the council? Staff? Is there a motion? Let's see, amend, for the amendment, and it's on. Amendment number five, resolution twenty twenty five zero eight. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty five zero eight.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Costa Junior is absent. Councilmember Fernandez.
Hi.
Councilmember Vegas.
Hi.
Councilmember Hernandez, Mayor Julian.
Hi, all eyes. Okay, moving right along. Item thirteen explorer. Lots of consolidation of Guadalupe Transit Bus Service with Santa Maria Regional Transit. Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Once again, I'm coming to you. This item is. The opportunity for the city to explore whether or not we would like to have this. Santa Maria, Santa Maria Regional Transit take over the bus service in Guadalupe. Currently, Smooth provides that service. We are the only agency that Smooth provides bus service for. And their contract will be coming up at the end of this fiscal year. I was approached by the transit manager for the Santa Maria Regional Transit. They are looking at expanding their service and consolidating some of the smaller services into one. This has been a longstanding goal by the state and also it's being promoted also by S B CAG. To kind of. Have a more regional approach to it. As you know, as you may know, that there are a lot of reporting requirements now. And it makes, becomes extremely onerous for a small agency like us to meet all the reporting requirements. In fact, Smooth has indicated to me that it, it is often difficult for them, especially since we are their only client that they have to do that work for. I've had, so I've had these discussions with the regional transit manager and we have, and he's proposed to me. And I've agreed that I should bring to you the opportunity to at least explore whether or not we should have. Santa Maria Regional Transit provide our transit services. They would purchase the buses, they would maintain the buses, they would provide the drivers and all the training. They have the state of the art training facilities right at, at their facility. If you've ever been to, to see that, they have a, a virtual. Bus driving system where they train their, their bus drivers before they actually get on the road. So hopefully they can prevent some accidents. And S B CAG staff is supportive of this as well. And we will, if we get approval from the city council, then we will be bringing it to the North County Regional. Board here in February to, to ask for a formal recommendation by S B CAG to approve. Prove this consolidation. But right now, we're, we are only looking at the potential of what it would mean. So we would go through all the analysis and see if it's worthwhile for the city. So there's, it'll be brought back to you before any kind of final decisions are made on this.
What you're reading from Smooth? What you're reading from Smooth?
The last time we went out and we asked them to do it, they were reluctant. And so I'm going to have some more discussions with Phil about about it, but I know it's 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 onerous for them, so.
I I think it's from SB CAG perspective, as regional is 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 the key, being able to modify programs that aren't piecemealed, to where there's funding coming in to support this whole process. Not only that, but wastewater, everything else, so.
Yeah, and if and if you look at our transit system, we are one of the smallest in the two counties. Most small agencies like Royal Grande, Pismo Beach, they rely on the RTA to provide that their bus service. They don't do it themselves.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to comment, there's a certain economies of scale too.
Right, for sure.
And we, it would, I don't touch the the paperwork as much as maybe Dan or it does and others, and maybe even Janice, but there's a lot of, lot of reimbursement, a lot of follow-up, a lot of insurance requirements. And so I'm just putting it out there that it's kind of cumbersome for us to manage the the, you know, the workload on that.
I have a quick question. How does this affect local jobs? Are we already bus drivers losing jobs or any administrative staff losing jobs if we consolidate?
Not locally. In fact, it could be that those drivers will be picked up by by Smart to do that that work, but they would have to be trained by them. They would do the federal training and all the licensing and everything for them. So I'm I'm sure that there's the opportunity for them to continue as bus drivers, that they'll they'll still need people to cover our routes, so.
Jeff, you you cite in the the staff report all the advantage to to do this. What might be a disadvantage to have Santa Maria Transit take us over?
Just maybe the loss of local control. But, you know, we, Santa Maria is like our sister cities, so, and we're so close to them, and most of the transit is getting from town to Santa Maria. So I don't know that there are any cons to it. It'll remove a lot of the administrative burden from from us. Basically, we will just pay a fee. We will still get the money in from the federal, from the federal funds, and then we will pass those on to Santa Maria.
Thanks.
All we're asking for, all you're asking the council to do now is to look at Explorer.
That's correct. That is right.
And we come up with the numbers and sort of impact and hear more from Smooth and see what they.
Yeah, we will go through the entire process and SB CAG staff will be involved in the process. And then this, both city councils, this, if you approve this tonight, it will be going to the city of Santa Maria. Well, they will also approve it, and then and then they will start the studies.
I have a question. Jeff, will it replace, so right now I'm working on the transit.
Oh, she asked. Okay, you're.
Sorry. I'm doing the transit reports right now and the special operations report for transit for the state. Will that replace that, those two reports as well?
That's right.
Those financial transaction reports?
Yes.
And then you said that we would still get them federal money, but we would then turn around and and provide that to Santa Maria.
That's correct.
Is there something that we would have to file to, like, is there something that we still have to file in order to receive that federal money?
I'm not sure right now. That'll be part of the study, I'm sure.
Okay, and then just to put it in perspective, I was looking at last year's data for twenty four transit. With the revenues coming in and the expenses going out, we make probably about a hundred thousand.
I have one more question before we vote to explore this or not. Do we have any projects? I feel like there's a lot of transit projects right now that are we talking about electric buses or things? Is this, if we go this direction, will that stop some of the projects we already have been talking about in the past? I just feel like there's a lot going on with transportation.
There there is, and no, that won't stop any of the projects that are going on right now. We have our our electric vehicle charging and bus charging infrastructure that's going out of the three oh three Obispo Street where the water tanks are that hopefully will be going out to bid here in the next month. And we will still have that charging station, so Santa Maria will still, they will purchase the buses. That that is another one of the advantages for us, because they purchase a lot of buses and we kind of piggyback on top of them. And right now, because we are a sub-recipient for Santa Maria, they are still holding the bag for whether or not we do all our inspections. So they're kind of concerned about that, because even though the buses are under our control, Santa Maria is ultimately responsible for them currently, because we purchased them under their under them, so it won't change anything, except that perhaps some of the money that we would have expended on the electric vehicles would go to Santa Maria, who would then purchase them for our city. I also, just so you're aware Galama Leo, I think that's how you pronounce his name. He is the transit manager. He stated to me that, well, they purchased about seventeen of these microbuses. I don't know if you've seen those, but he said that, you know, that would be really nice to have around Santa Maria or around Guadalupe as well, just to do kind of like a microtransit where they can pick up somebody at their house and take them to somewhere.
Any further questions? What's the desire of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty five dash oh nine.
There's a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Costa Junior is absent. Councilmember Fernandez.
Hi.
Councilmember Vegas.
Hi.
Councilmember Hernandez. And Mayor Julian.
Hi, well, Resolution passed.
Thank you.
All right, item fourteen, granting consent to the County of Santa Barbara to establish the Santa Barbara County Wine Improvement District and include the city of Guadalupe in the establishment of the SBCWID. And Larry's not here, but I think Todd's.
I could take this. Larry was unable to make it, and he let me know last minute, so. But this was something we touched on and asked you to see consensus-wise if you wanted to bring this back. And what it is, is it's a wine improvement district that utilizes the efficiencies of private sector operations in the market based on promotion promotion of assessed businesses. I know some of our local businesses have been approached and they're really happy about this idea, because by instituting this, it'll create revenue for marketing for our region. All the, I think most, every agency is bought into this idea. And what it is, is asking for a one percent assessment on 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 the gross revenue sales of that entity. So that'll bring in money that'll be pooled in for the 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 whole group, and it'll help market our community along with other other communities within Santa Barbara County. It's proposed for a five-year term beginning March one twenty twenty five. So I think it's a good idea. I think it's great. There's a lot more detail in the staff report, but I would recommend, and I think Larry does too, to move forward with approving a resolution granting the establishment of this district.
A quick question.
Please.
Question. I wrote a note. I can't quite read it now. Hang on.
I probably stumble on it myself.
Well, first of all, ironically, in the Santa Maria Times, there was an article that Lompoc didn't enter into this process.
That's right. That was the one agency that I heard, but I don't know why.
It was very interesting. There were pros and cons in the article. My question is, if Guadalupe doesn't grant permission to be included in this assessment district, so what? And more specifically, is there only one one chance right now to say yes or no? Or can we, we say no today and reconsider it and then do it? Or is it a one-shot only?
I I actually don't know, have that answer, to be honest with you. Oh, okay. Well, I think the person might be here to talk about it.
Good evening. I'm Allison Laslet. I'm the CEO of the Santa Barbara Vintners Association, so I can probably answer some of these questions. I'll just go back one second. Lompoc did carve itself out. It's important to know that two members of the city council had to recuse themselves because they were so entrenched in the wine industry. Because it is a monetary transaction, it then required all three of the remaining votes. There were two votes for the approval and one against. So it was a very unusual circumstance where one negative vote managed to remove an entire city from the wine district. In answer to the other question, unfortunately, right now is the moment to either join the district for the next five years, or the district will be renewed in five years for another ten years. The reason we're interested in Guadalupe, joining, you have no wineries in your city limits. So this has no cost to your city or to any of the businesses in your city. However, if a winery did move into Guadalupe, we would, we would want them to be able to be promoted along with the rest of the wine industry in Santa Barbara County.
I have a quick question, and I don't know who's going to have the answer, but we have one. Is it not considered a wine tasting facility, the Guadalupe Social Club?
So social clubs and grocery stores, wine shops, those are all exempt from this. This is direct-to-consumer sales out of wineries that actually make the wine or have a tasting room.
So then if we don't have any facilities that would be a part of this at this moment? Correct, but what would we get out of the, I mean, would we still be promoted? I mean, I don't understand how, what would?
What I think it could do is it could make us, for lack of a better term, shovel-ready. So by having it in place, they would want to maybe focus their business here. So I don't think, there's, I don't think there's a downside. That that it would have, yeah, for the idea that somebody would come here knowing that there's promotional abilities already. You know what I'm saying, so.
If approved, there would mean no fiscal impact to residents, business, currently.
Not my understanding, no. It only affects the business itself.
It's the wineries that are assessed. The wineries are assessed one percent. Residents and businesses are not.
Yeah, but it's not impacting them, though, huh?
I mean, are we even part of the wine district if we don't have wine here? I mean, I just don't understand what it, what it's doing for us, except in future potentials. So I guess your question about now or never makes sense. I just for, yeah, five year, I mean, that's a long time. I just, yeah, I, okay. I mean, it doesn't seem
No.
Or an upside right now either? I mean, I just feel like it's neutral at the moment.
Can get any kind of side advertising, even if you're not, you don't have a winery?
That's a good question. So what will be promoted is the Santa Barbara Wine Country. And we will make a map of what that wine country is. Currently, that map will not include the city of Lompoc. So I I know, I I was really sort of heartbroken when I saw that happen. I just wanted to say, don't do that. So I think that, I think that's a great way to put it. This this sets you up for the future. If you have a winery that moves to Guadalupe, then it will immediately be on the map. Your city will be on the map. Our map will, if you pass this, will include Guadalupe on the map, even though you don't have a winery. So, you know, it's, I I I sort of agree, there's no immediate upside, but I think it protects you from perhaps a downside in the future.
And then what, what areas are included on the map or will be included on the map besides Guadalupe if we were to approve this?
Everything except Lompoc.
So, so everything in Santa Barbara, I mean, Santa Barbara County?
Yes.
Okay, so just not Lompoc.
Just not Lompoc.
Oh, Lompoc.
Santa Barbara County will end at the Santa Rita Hills on the wine country map now.
When did, when did Lompoc vote on this?
Last week.
Okay, I have a friend on the council down there.
I do, too.
What's the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty five dash ten.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Councilmember Costa Junior is absent. Councilmember Fernandez.
Hi.
Councilmember Vegas.
Hi.
Councilmember Hernandez. Mayor Julian.
Hi, all eyes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item fifteen, EV charging station parking restrictions, Chief Cash.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I I drafted the order, the the resolution, and Chief Cash will. I did it at his request. It wasn't my idea. But we'll tag team, we'll tag team this. I'm not sure I can.
Kick him under the table.
Well, since he's making a big deal about it, he asked me, like, oh, I shouldn't do this, you should do it. So I was just stepping up.
Can I, all right, chief, do you want to do this?
Yeah, here, I'm, I'll be silent, sir. Okay. Sorry about that. Apologize to the public for the the dirty laundry there. This started, and again, if you have any questions about the origin of why this is happening, Chief Cash isn't in a better position to answer that than than I am. But I believe last meeting, there was public comment about some people allegedly hogging the the parking spaces and not letting others use the EV station parking spaces and city-owned property. And so to combat that, I was, I was asked if the city has the power to limit the the time, and sure enough, it does. And wasn't that difficult to amend our ordinance to limit the time, but the question was, how long? A lot of cities have a four-hour time limit. That was initially, I think, what I was leaning towards, but then our chargers are a little bit older, and it takes, according to I mentioned in there, it takes about eleven hours to fully recharge a vehicle. Yeah, there's slow chargers, so it seemed that an eight-hour restriction was probably more reasonable, because that would get a vehicle most of the way charged, whereas four hours might make it, you know, not quite twenty-five percent. So that was why we went with the eight-hour time limit. There is signage requirements that the city will have to incur a little expense to create signage. And then the enforcement will be on the on the chief. So for any questions about the nature of the complaints or how noxious they are and how we would go about enforcing that, I will defer to the chief.
Somebody leaves their car overnight. And then sometimes more than overnight. I mean, it's way beyond.
Also, if I can, I I can just interject, we will be installing new chargers at the Amtrak Station.
Right.
These will not be slow chargers, but also people will be charged. So if they'll be charged for downtime as well, so they're not going to, they're going to be an incentive to move their cars along, so.
Jeff, will the the ones that are slow charging be updated?
I don't believe that they they will. They would have, we'd have to have new electrical services and everything drawn in there to.
That is very long time. That's like plugging into the wall.
That almost, I remember the the complaint that was given before and by whom it was given. But eight hours is a long time, and that kind of doesn't quite address the issue of a car being there for an extended period of time where others, where others can't, yeah, can't participate.
Are, is that a charge? Is that a, is that, are they charged for electricity at those spots?
No, they're not. And 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 four hours is perfectly, I'm sorry, four hours is perfectly fine if the council wants to have a shorter time limit. I was just coming up with that number out of thin air, so there's no, there's not, the four hours is pretty standard.
The four hours. I appreciate our city attorney on the eight hours. She's trying to look for something that would be fair for everybody. But at the Veterans Memorial Parking Lot, it officially closes at midnight. So having eight hours, you pretty much take up a large percentage of the day. And so that would only allow maybe And so that would only allow maybe one car, maybe two at most. So. Four hours would fit. And to have it for everybody. And then to, eight hours is a problematic to a certain degree at the senior center. Because we still have events going on and the way that charger is positioned. You can only get one car really in there without having much of a problem, you know, without, without having like other problems. So to have more turnover, that would fit better.
I think four hours may be too short, just because if it is a slow charging, I would hate for someone not to get sufficient.
If they do it at home.
That's the thing. I mean, I, I feel like if we're not.
We're not charging.
Yeah, we're not charging, paying, having them pay for it and they could do it at home if it's the same as plugging into a wall.
Do we want to consider metering these at some point?
New ones.
Only have two, yeah, the new ones. Well, they're gonna have, they're gonna be charged. The new ones are gonna be charged.
I feel like this should just be like a temporary, like, oh, man, I need some charge. Exactly. So I think four hours is sufficient, but I mean, I'm, I'm, I could listen to six hours too, but. But I think four hours.
No, I'd go with four hours, so. Is there a motion to, or what do you want to do? Resolution with, shall we decide on the hours first?
Janice has a question. Just curious, how do, how are we regulating that this person, that these people are going to be there? Would it, oh, just.
Or, or finance.
Good question. Would we?
I'm trying to figure out, like, do you know, like, this person has been there for like?
Chalk their tires.
Is there a camera out there? I don't, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just asking a question like. How do you know, like, that person's been there for four hours?
Well, the chief's right. You can't chalk the tires anymore because that's a violation of the Ninth Amendment apparent, or the Fourth Amendment. Illegal search and seizure. There was a crazy case out of the Ninth Circuit about that. However, you could still take a photo on your cell phone, I guess, or you could just observe it and you're, you know, notice the time on the clocks. Yeah, or if we had a camera. So there are ways to enforce it. It's not going to be particularly easy. We're only going to get the real violators that are.
Would we be ticketing them or would we be towing them immediately?
We, we can't, I would say right now we, we would ticket. I'm not sure we would have the.
We have the towing capacity yet, because that's something that.
We are working on a comprehensive. Citywide towing policy. We don't really have one. So the answer. Is yes and no. We would ticket them. We probably wouldn't tow them. And there's also some problems with towing.
We know who it is.
A couple of people because they, they park and then they take their scooter out and go home. We're not gonna say where they go home to. But we know the person, so we can advise them personally.
Mr. Mayor, we can also look into. Our provider or the supplier for our charging system also makes smaller, slower systems that would connect to our. Our billing so that they would be charged for that. I, it might be that. Somebody sees a free charging place and they just plug in.
Right.
If it weren't free, they might not stay for very long.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and those, those.
Devices give us the opportunity for city employees to charge. City vehicles with no, at no charge.
Okay.
No cost.
Okay, where are we? First. Four, four? Okay. And then I think with the option of exploring the, you know, the, the charging for the ones that, the two that we have, so.
That does not have to be on this resolution.
Resolution 2025-11.
I, I'm sorry, I have to make some changes to it.
Okay, well, make the changes.
You're, you're moving very fast.
I am.
I was. There's a problematic paragraph that I'm gonna have to pretty much delete and just basically say. Instead of the last one, last whereas, we'll just say the city council.
Not putting words in.
Mouth. City Council finds.
Is equitable to limit the maximum amount of time a vehicle can park for four hours.
That will solve the issue. So I'm deleting part of that first.
That was tough. Good job. I hope you didn't charge for that.
I wanted to make sure I, I got it right.
Right, that's your job. Okay, yeah, thank you. Okay, with that change, is there a motion to adopt resolution 2025-11?
Take a motion to adopt resolution number 2025-11.
And with discussed changes. I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call please. Putting you to work today, Jean.
Councilmember Costa Junior is absent. Councilmember Fernandez.
Hi.
Councilmember Viejas.
Hi.
Councilmember Hernandez. Mayor Julian.
Hi, all eyes. Next item is 16 city council appointments to various boards and committees. I, I did some homework and I would. I threw out just for draft. Just for discussion. Only, but yeah. You'll see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Different boards or commissions. And. And you'll see the, the bottom side of that that has. Who are the primaries and who are the alternates? The, the biggest, the two biggest ones. Boards or commissions are the SB CAG. And San Barbara County Air Pollution Control District. Can I all stay on those? And then if. And then again, there's writings, there's, there's. Definitions of what these meetings meet, meetings mean that. Todd, can you explain that Central Coast Water Authority, how often they? They meet?
They meet like quarterly. To be honest with you, I have never attended one. When Shannon was here, she regularly attended those. And I'm, I'm the only staff, as you can see, everybody on this list are elected officials, but in this case. It was allowed to allow a staff person to be appointed to.
They would, so you could actually, and I'm, I'm just thinking out loud, you can actually switch. You and, and I, and again, a draft was with Whitney. How about the, the Twitchell Advisory? Twitchell Management, I'm sorry.
One thing that might make sense is just put a, just a plug for the Public Works Director. When that person gets in place, we could put that person in there instead of me.
Okay, that would be easy to change. You're talking about the Water Authority, Central Coast?
Yeah, yes.
I said Twitchell, I don't know if you've ever been to one.
Yeah, I have been to a few, but I, if anybody is available to do primary, I would be open to that too.
Wait. Okay.
Beneficial to figure out. Oh, do we have the? Meet when the meetings are. So we can.
And it, it is hard for people that work, so it's.
Oh, it looks like the Water Authority is. Monthly.
Yeah.
I'm good with staying there until we get the Public Works Director, but I'm happy to step in where I can as well. If.
I would switch Todd with you, have Todd as a primary.
For where?
For the Water Authority.
Okay.
So that you don't blame it on him for not attending, so.
Whitney secondary?
Yes, that's my, that's my thought.
That's for the Central Coast Water Authority and the Twitchell.
You, Christina, you had a? Issue with that or you?
Yeah, but I could say primary if needed. Try to make it work. I think they meet quarterly.
Okay. Public Works Director, we can, as soon as that, we can come back and change that.
Well, I have that actually.
The Joint Powers. He's not here, so he's gonna, I'm gonna point him at primary.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would, that's one I would like to do as primary. And Gina's has been on it.
Okay.
Is currently the one, so I thought he would not be the primary.
You want to switch then?
Yeah, I'd like to be primary.
Okay, good. Then you could go down to. Okay, sorry about that. So she'll be the primary and then Gina will be the secondary. And the Central Coast Synergy, I'll be the primary. Ask you to be the, the, the Senior Center Advisor Committee person. I'll still be there, but I'll.
That was the other one that I wanted anyway, so.
Okay, cool. Okay, you want to be the primary? Very rarely. It's, a lot of it's zoomed. Okay, well, you want to be the? Okay, I'll be secondary then. Okay. Second, as the alternate.
Can you figure that out?
Well, I, I actually, I, I apologize. Guy was kind of distracted.
I got it.
I was wondering, yeah. I, I didn't know for the minutes if we wanted for the record. But, okay, yeah.
That's, somebody, somebody repeat that.
So. Per what we just discussed.
From the top to bottom.
We're gonna keep the mayor on the SB CAG as the primary, the alternate is Christina. The second one, the APCD, it's gonna be the mayor as the primary and Christina as a secondary.
Okay.
Central Coast Water Authority, Todd will be the primary, Whitney as the secondary. Twitchell Management, Christina as a primary, Whitney as a secondary, and we will work together to. See who can make those.
Okay.
California Joint Powers Insurance, Amelia will be the primary with Jean as a secondary. Three C Energy, Whitney as the primary with Jean as a secondary. And the Senior Center will stay, or will be Amelia as the primary with the mayor as the alternate.
Got it.
Very good. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, yes, sir.
Is there a, a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the board appointments for. Effective January 28, 2025 to December 8, 2026, showing the primary and the alternate names.
Say hi?
Hi.
All eyes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, future agenda items. We have to put the fireworks in there.
Yeah, yeah.
What are we doing with that?
I just want to remind the council that people are afraid to come forward and report their neighbors. They're terrified. They will speak to me, but they will not reply on Facebook. Or on Nextdoor most of the time. I get a few replies and then we get, I get, you know, people calling me a hag. So. You know, this is an issue we have to try to approach from the start. Not after the fact or not during the problem we have with fireworks. And as I said last time, this year was exceptionally bad. In my neighborhood and in my friend Tish's neighborhood. We were bombarded with. The sounds of mortars going off for months before the Fourth of July. And I've done a little bit of research and there's no way to tell for sure when people go buy illegal fireworks.
We're gonna, we're gonna take that up. I mean, this, yeah, this is.
All right, sorry.
But we'll take it up. For sure. Okay, thank you. Answers council activity. Reports, Christina, here.
Me and my daughter attended the Women's March in Santa Maria. It was my daughter's first time and she really was excited and she asked me, when are we gonna have one in Guadalupe? So I have some thinking to do. I am, I also wanted to share that tomorrow. McKinsey and Mary Baron will be having a community school event. And it is at 5:30 to 6:30 to come and learn more about their new initiatives and how we can support students and the community. Thank you.
Cool, Amelia?
Also, Mary Buren, last Friday. Let me back up. Teachers, some teachers and some parents have established a committee on multicultural, multicultural committee. And they've had two meetings and I've attended both. They're trying to bring. Different cultures, introduce different cultures to the students. And last Friday, they had a group from Cal Poly. For the Lunar New Year, which actually is tomorrow. And they had the, it was a Chinese group and they had the drums and they had two dragons. They had the kids sitting out on the. The blacktop out here and they were in a U shape and then the two dragons went around and I was standing behind. It must have been five or six-year-old kindergarten, I guess. And this one girl just freaked. She broke down in tears for, for 35 minutes. She was crying. But the other kids thought it was really great. I took a little video. It, it was really neat, the little dragons, the two dragons, very well done. And they're hoping to get other types of events, again, to introduce cultures. Last Wednesday, I think. Last Wednesday, I attended a. A forum in Santa Maria at the Ilks, which was given by the Rotary Club. And it was a two-and-a-half-hour presentation on human trafficking. There were about 100-plus people. There, and the most enlightening part was there were four survivors on a panel. That just wiped me out.
Rotary Club that, that put that together, so. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. And then you supported that with your raffle ticket purchases. That's, that's what we use to finance that, so. Thank you.
My daughter saw the dragons. At school and she thought that they were the coolest. And then I just want to note that we're making progress on putting together a committee for the Capitol Campaign for the Royal Theater. Lots of emails, lots of people interested, so working that as some of you are aware, but yeah, really excited for that.
Thanks for doing that. It's important. A couple of things. One is, you may have seen it today in the newspaper or TV that Hancock College is. Is, they have classes there at the Senior Center, I think four days a week. There's, if you look at KCU, was it KSY or KSBY, KCU, no, San, Santa Barbara Station. KEYT says Hancock and Santa Maria Joint Union High School District offer classes in Guadalupe. And so they have from, basically they're there from four to eight o'clock. The teachers come in, they have a log box that the teachers set up the rooms. And they're teaching upwards of almost 30 kids. Twenty, at least a dozen of them for Guadalupe. They actually have transportation if somebody wants to come from. Santa Maria into the Senior Center. And the rooms are set up, they're dealing with, what is it? Introduction to Public Speaking, Psychology 101, Introduction to Psychology are held at the Senior Center. So that the Hancock's renting that center for that and it's doing really well. There's a picture, if you look at the paper or the news today. Shows tons of kids and there's a banner that they all sign. It's probably about 30 kids signed the banner that says Hancock College. I talked to the president, I was at a meeting the other, last Friday with the president and he said that. He was gonna go and go to that meeting to, to see how it's going and it's going really well, so. They're also gonna do, Ragetti is doing a class here. On how to apply for scholarships and things like that. So they're gonna actually work, work through. on how to apply for scholarships and things like that, so they're gonna actually wa- work through the the ki- with the kids to let let them know how to apply for different things. Uh, there was a, uh, last Friday, there's this, this thing here. There's a, it's called Upward Mobility and Framework, and uh two sessions, one were held, one in Santa Barbara, one in Hancock College, Hancock Panel included Fourth District Supervisor Bob Nelson, Third District Supervisor Hartman, and mayors of uh Bielton, Solvang, and Guadalupe to discuss eliminating poverty in Santa Barbara County. And how do you eliminate poverty? It's a real, that's a big ticket item. But if you look down the second page of this, I'm sorry, I can give you a look. If you look on that second page, it shows the poverty level in Santa Barbara County, and Guadalupe has twenty-eight percent below the federal poverty level. And so how do you, how do you deal with that? So it's uh uh, this group, uh upward bound mobility is working toward that on the on the county level, so that's good. Then there's also, when I was at that meeting last Friday, there was a group it's actually Gerber, uh her HR director used to be here, Amica, she is a part of this uh rec- recampus, a blueprint for reintegration, and I'll just read it real quick. Recampus serves as a step-by-step guide for successfully transitioning individuals from a state of crisis to stability and self-sufficiency. Our housing and treatment model includes a licensed residential treatment facility, drug and alcohol outpatient intensive outpatient treatment, and a transitional housing program dedicated to supporting men with post-incarceration, so. Yes.
Just so you know, I'm I'm on that board.
Okay, good.
And uh they have saved two beds for Guadalupe. Um, if we either have homeless or narcotic type things, but it's voluntary, but yes, I'm I'm, I work with them on on a regular basis.
Good, that's good to know, that's a That it's uh, our hands are tied to a certain extent, but we need to make sure that that's higher on the, on our priority list of how to get these folks housed, so. Yes. Twenty-eight percent under the federal poverty level in Guadalupe. And there's, again, you look at the other areas, like, where is it? Uh, Santa Maria has fifteen percent, Lompoc has sixteen percent, number seventeen, Solvang seven percent, Coyama fourteen percent, uh Santa Barbara thirteen percent, Carpinteria six percent. But we're uh twenty-eight percent um under the forward level, so that's, that's not good. Anyway, that's, that's all I had. Uh, any, any update from you all that you want to share? All right, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I second.
Is there a second? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All eyes. Thank you all.